This meeting will come to order, and I'm so happy to say we're starting on time at nine o'clock. Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting and return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Duxbury Town Meeting Warrant, Saturday, March 11, 2023, at nine o'clock a.m., Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street, Duxbury, Mass. Plymouth S.S. Greetings to the Constable of the Town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street, in said Duxbury, on Saturday, the 11th day of March, 2023, next at nine o'clock in the forenoon for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3.1 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands the sixth day of February 2023. Select Board Fernando Guitard Chair, Cynthia Lad Fiorini Vice Chair, Michael McGee Clerk, Theodore Flynn, Amy McNabb. Plymouth S.S., February 8, 2023. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury here and described by posting the warrant in precincts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitch LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
Unless there's some objection, we'll dispense with reading of the warrant. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the honor guard. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, almighty nation, God, individual, for all. Please be seated. I want to start by thanking everybody for coming out this morning. It's not the most inviting morning, but it is important that we come and conduct the business of the town. I'd like to introduce some of the people you see facing you before we start. They are on your right, my left, your Board of Selectmen with Chair Fernando Guitard. Next to him is our Finance Director, John Adams, and Town Manager, Rainey Reed. To my right is the... Your left is the Finance Committee with Chair Betsy Sullivan. Up here on the stage with me, to my immediate left is our Town Clerk Susan Kelly and our Assistant Town Manager... I'm sorry, Assistant. We just promoted you. Our Assistant Town Clerk Tara Wakefield. And to my far left is Jeffrey Blake, our Town Council. We also have some special guests with us today, Senator Patrick O'Connor and Representative Josh Cutler. Before we get into the meat of the meeting, Town Manager Rainey Reed has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As many of you know, our colleague and friend, former Town Clerk Nancy Oates, passed away on February 22nd. Nancy's professional career began in teaching, an experience she truly loved, having taught in Easton, Brookline, and Duxbury, where she would eventually go on to create the Snug Harbor Nursery School in Duxbury, which she ran for many years. Following the passing of her husband Dick in December of 1982, Nancy decided to run for the position of Town Clerk and won her first election by only three votes. She would go on to hold that position through the 10 consecutive election cycles for the next 31 years and ultimately retire in 2014. Nancy stated many times that she enjoyed the varied aspects of the job, including administering marriage licenses, birth and death certificates, taking town meeting minutes, and registering voters, but her favorite aspect was running elections. Nancy's elections were well-run, and during her tenure, she administered several recounts for elections just too close to call. Nancy left her mark not only in the history of the office, but also on the memories of those whom she had served throughout the major events in their lives. The Town of Duxbury will miss her, and we will always be grateful for her many years of service to us and her devotion to the community and the residents of Duxbury. Nancy loved this town, its people, and certainly the process for which we are gathered here today. That said, I would kindly ask that we please observe a moment of silence in her honor.
Thank you. We also have some other people we're going to recognize before we start the meeting, and I ask Mr. Guitard if you'd like to rise.
Apologies for that. It is with great honor that I stand before you and have the ability to read a resolve to honor and recognize Theodore J. Flynn. Whereas Theodore J. Flynn served with distinction as a highly regarded member of the Select Board for the past 12 years and as Chair for three of those years. And whereas Theodore J. Flynn saw many changes in Duxbury's town government from hiring a new Town Council, a new Town Manager, the development of a Facilities Director, and a Chief Technology Officer. And whereas Theodore J. Flynn's leadership saw the following projects to realization: a new police station, a remodeled and upgraded fire station, a new nationally accredited senior center, along with the subsequent addition, a state-of-the-art co-located high school, middle school, and a new regional dispatch center, all of which have launched Duxbury into providing the community with the most up-to-date and efficient services. And whereas Theodore J. Flynn, for over 30 years, served on many boards and committees, including, to name a few, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, Library Trustees, and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which introduced recycling to Duxbury. And whereas Theodore J. Flynn has been a dedicated and consummate advocate for this town, bringing his financial and managerial expertise to the Select Board, where he advocated for best practices, all in the best interest of the town and the residents he served. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this, the 11th day of March, 2023, the Town of Duxbury, through the Select Board and the Town Manager, offer Theodore J. Flynn a heartfelt thanks for his many years of leadership and service to the town.
I'm a terrible compare. I believe we have some of our special guests as well to...
Please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Pat O'Connor. I'm the State Senator for Duxbury. I've had the honor of being in this position for seven years, and when I first got elected, it was through a special election. And I went around and called every elected official on the municipal level prior to the election, and I remember Ted getting back to me right away. And it's that efficiency that he brought to this position every single day. And as you heard from the Select Board Chair, his fingerprints are on so many of the important successful things that Duxbury's been able to do over the past decade-plus. And so one of the things that Representative Cutler and I were able to do was have a resolution read into the record in both the House of Representatives and in the Massachusetts State Senate. So Ted, you're forever part of the history of the Journal, the Massachusetts State House of Representatives, and the State Senate. And with your indulgence, we'll read the resolution that we had read into the record, and I'll read the first two, and Josh, I'll let you do the rest. And so it's a resolution commending Theodore J. Flynn upon his retirement after decades of dedicated service to the Town of Duxbury. Whereas Mr. Theodore J. Flynn will retire in March, 2023, after more than four decades of dedicated, distinctive, and professional service to the Town of Duxbury, including service on numerous boards, commissions, subcommittees, and civic organizations; 12 years on the Duxbury Select Board and 13 years on the Library Board of Trustees. And whereas Mr. Flynn, a retired captain within the United States Coast Guard Reserve, had a successful career as head of the Massachusetts Society of Certified Public Accountants, began his career to the community of the Town of Duxbury as a member of the School Committee, where he served for two terms; was Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which was responsible for introducing recycling to the Town of Duxbury; and contributed his expertise to various town committees, including the Town Manager Study Committee, the Finance Committee, the Town Government Study Committee, and the Alternative Energy Committee, where he served as liaison, helping to bring the town's solar array to the capital landfill.
I'm supposed to go "whereas," but first, I just have to say something and interrupt this. Good morning, everybody. I'm Representative Josh Cutler. I have the privilege of representing Duxbury in the House for the past 10-plus years, and I can truly say I would not be here without Ted Flynn. When I was first running for office, he was one of the first people that I came to to talk to, someone who I respected so much, I knew from his work, through the School Committee, through the Planning Board, through all the different committees and civic groups that he has served. He has been the constant for me throughout my years of service representing the town. I'm really going to miss him, although he's not going away, but we're certainly going to miss him in his role. He's always been the one we picked up the phone and called when we had a question, we wanted to get the town's perspective on something. So just a truly a mammoth contribution to the Town of Duxbury for many, many years, certainly really deeply appreciative on a personal level and on a professional level. So I had to say that. Let me do my "whereas" bit here. I didn't bring my glasses. Whereas Mr. Flynn provided leadership to the Select Board of the Town of Duxbury for over a decade, aiding in repairing the Powder Point Bridge and Duxbury Beach seawall. And when the Select Board expanded from a three-member to a five-member board, Mr. Flynn was the only member to continue serving on the Board, overseeing the construction of new facilities, including a crematorium, police headquarters, new high school and middle school, and in addition to the Fire Department Headquarters. And... I get the next "whereas"? Whereas Mr. Flynn appreciated the strength of the community in the Town of Duxbury and recognized its ability to achieve town goals with fiscal responsibility, and he brought valuable institutional knowledge, a strong grasp of town finances, and a talent for working with people who had diverse perspectives to his work on the Select Board. And whereas Mr. Flynn's professionalism and commitment to his position and to the Town of Duxbury have set a high standard for his peers and for the Select Board for years to come. He is recognized as a leader who's demonstrated his dedication to the Town of Duxbury through his advocacy for the safety of residents, his support of the refurbishing and maintaining of seawall infrastructure and public roads and bridges in the town, and his contributions to town planning. And his practical managerial experience proved to be a valuable asset to the town, where he played a crucial role in supporting important changes to the Town of Duxbury. Therefore, be it... And I'll share a resolved... All right, I got... See, we work well together. Resolve that the members of the Massachusetts General Court hereby congratulate Mr. Ted J. Flynn on the occasion of his retirement, and be it further resolved...
That these resolutions are going to be forwarded by the Clerk of the House of Representatives and the Clerk of the Senate to Ted Flynn, and this is signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano, Senate President Karen Spilka, and offered by myself, State Senator Patrick O'Connor, and Representative Josh Cutler. Honestly, Ted, thank you so much for all the time for the town.
I have a short, two-hour speech, but I'll try to wrap it up and just say, thank you very much. It's an honor, and it's been an honor to serve the town. And I think we do great things at town meeting. We have a wonderful professional staff who makes our respective lives very easy. We have great committees with active volunteers. We have boards who work very hard for all of us. So again, I thank you.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a similar resolution for my friend and colleague, John Quincy Adams. You gonna be okay? Whereas John Quincy Adams, an MMAAA-certified governmental accountant with over 25 years of experience in both the private and public sector, having previously served the towns of North Attleboro and Carver, Massachusetts, and the town of Hampton, New Hampshire; and whereas John Quincy Adams continued his municipal career with the Town of Duxbury in February 2018 as the Finance Director, and because of his varied skillset and deep knowledge of municipal government, when the need arose in the summer of 2022, was able to seamlessly serve as Duxbury's acting Town Manager, and then returned to serve in his role as Finance Director through his retirement in June of 2023. And whereas John Quincy Adams, as the result of his dedication to Duxbury's financial welfare, has maintained the town's AAA bond rating and continued to receive the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, all the while keeping the town financially sound through the continued refinement of our budgetary processes. And whereas John Quincy Adams, in sharing his vision of what financial technology advancement could and should be, using cloud-based budget cycle management software, produced and authored Duxbury's first-ever online budget book, and helped usher the town into this remarkable evolutionary process, providing us with efficient, collaborative, and automated budgeting. And whereas John Quincy Adams worked closely with the Finance Committee, Fiscal Advisory Committee, Town Manager, and many others, has developed and refined sound financial policies that will ultimately prove to be his everlasting positive legacy. And be it resolved that on this day, the 11th of March, 2023, the Town of Duxbury, through the Select Board and Town Manager, offer John Quincy Adams its grateful thanks for his years of dedicated service to the town and wishes him the very best on his retirement. Thank you, John.
We're back. We're back again. So we have similar recognition from the State Senate and the State House of Representatives, and for interest of time, we'll read one because they're very similar. But it says, "Be it known, the Massachusetts Senate and House of Representatives extend this congratulations to John Q. Adams in recognition of your five years of dedicated service to the Town of Duxbury and your outstanding commitment to public service, and that we wish you nothing but the best wishes for continued success." We know, as Ted had just mentioned, how important every municipal employee is, and 12 years of municipal service in the Town of Waymouth, and I just know firsthand how difficult budgeting and financing and all this can be nowadays, and to be able to have such a streamlined approach to this has been really impressive. And the Town of Duxbury is a marquee community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because of people like you, John, so thank you very much for your service.
John, I don't know if you wanted to say a couple words. I just wanted to echo those comments. I just wanted to echo those comments. I know, you know, Rainey's the Town Manager, and we have the Board of Selectmen, but we know when it comes to the number crunching, you know, it's you're the guy, and what an important role you play, and, you know, we're out there trying to advocate for Duxbury, and we know that you was really making all the numbers work. So we're grateful for all of your service. I'm not trying to embarrass Rainey, but he did the same thing. So we want to thank you really. We've had such a great tradition, I know, going back for a number of years of our... this particular role, and you brought it up a big notch, so really grateful for your service, and thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of speechless. That's... I guess that's why I wrote something down. So while I have only worked for Duxbury for roughly 15% of my 35-year career, or 25, I'm losing count, in municipal finance, I can guarantee you that these last five years will leave me with memories that will not soon be forgotten. My years in Duxbury were unprecedented by the pandemic, and in those years, I have worked with a core group of people, dedicated, passionate, and committed individuals. I talk about not only my staff, coworkers, department heads, and my boss, Rainey Reed, Town Manager, everyone, but I place particular emphasis on those residents of Duxbury who have served their community, be it on a board, committee, or working group. A big part of my job has been to work with the Finance Committee. I have worked for three other towns in my career, and I can barely remember maybe one or two Finance Committee members from those towns, what they look like, or what their names are. I have spent five budget seasons with a core group from the Duxbury Finance Committee. It is important for all residents of Duxbury to know that this group gets together twice a week for nearly five months straight, discussing, analyzing, and taking deep dives on fiscal matters of the town. Some members of this group go above and beyond to analyze certain financial data and trends, and there was never any such thing as providing them with too much data. Some nights, they would exhaust me and make me want to pull my hair out, as you can see. I won't be forgetting them anytime soon. Those nightly meetings were some of the downsides that come with this job, but some of the highlights as well. If you honor my service for the Town of Duxbury, you must give tribute to all who do this, with or without remuneration. That especially includes my wife, Margaret. For all those nights, she has tucked me off a cliff and listened to me venting for over 35 years. For it, because of them, I felt my value and my worth. So I thank you all.
And Mr. Flynn has some comments.
I have the honor to recognize and resolve one of our most important town employees who's retiring, and I do this somewhat reluctantly because he's Navy and I'm Coast Guard. But given that, whereas Michael Thorpe served in the U.S. Navy for five years active and 16 years reserve, retired off the Constitution in Boston Harbor at the rank of commander in 1993. Michael Thorpe, after his business career, applied for the Veterans Agent job and was hired in April 2010, dedicating 13 years to proudly serving the town's veterans. And Michael J. Thorpe served the Town of Duxbury's veterans with honor and dignity by assisting those low-income veterans, including the widows of veterans, and advocating for them with the Department of Veterans Affairs, filing claims and assessing health care. Michael Thorpe has been the voice of over 900 veterans over the years to ensure that they received the benefits they were eligible and entitled to. Michael Thorpe is recognized for always being a proud advocate and honorably serving the town's veterans. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this, the 11th day of March, 2023, the Town of Duxbury, through the Select Board and Town Manager, offer Michael J. Thorpe its grateful thanks for his years of dedicated service to the town, and I wish him the very best in retirement. Michael?
Michael, we got a little more for you. Good morning, we're back. I bring here a citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, similar to the citation that was read for Mr. Adams from the Massachusetts State Senate. If you'll indulge me for a moment. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Michael Thorpe in recognition of your 13 years of dedicated service and tireless commitment to the Town of Duxbury as a Veterans Agent. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this day of March, 2023, State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, myself as State Representative, and we have a companion citation here from the Massachusetts State Senate from Senator O'Connor. Congratulations, Michael.
13 years, and I'm still working at age 80, you know? It's time. 80 for Brady, right? So it's time to move on. I'm looking forward to a younger veteran to replace me, ideally somebody who served in the Middle East. That would be ideal, less than a large group of veterans will come onboard that'll need services. So it's been an honor to serve the veterans here in Duxbury. I thank you all.
And Mrs. McNabb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am fortunate enough to be able to recognize George Wadsworth, who I consider a friend. So this is a resolve to honor and recognize George D. Wadsworth. Whereas George D. Wadsworth began his volunteer service over 40 years ago, starting in 1983 when he was elected as the Water Commissioner, which led to being appointed to many boards and committees, such as the Public Works Committee, Solid Waste Disposal Committee, MBTA Advisory Board, and that's just to name a few. And whereas George D. Wadsworth dedicated lengthy service, continued as he was appointed to the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, a position he held until 2022, and more importantly, as a longstanding elected member of the Planning Board from 1994 until his recent resignation in 2023. Whereas George D. Wadsworth understood the importance of supporting regulations and represented the Planning Board on multiple committees, such as the Community Preservation Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and the MEPC. And whereas George D. Wadsworth was a recognized and important contributor of multiple comprehensive plans, starting with the Comprehensive Plan of 1999 to most currently working with the MEPC, to formulate Envision Duxbury, which sets the course for a 20-year planning horizon in an effort to preserve Duxbury's rural and historic character, as well as protecting our water and environment. And whereas George D. Wadsworth has been a respected member of many town committees, where he shared his valuable expertise and provided significant advisory assistance on... valuable expertise and provided significant advisory assistance on numerous projects through the years, all in the best interest of the residents he served. Now therefore be it resolved that on this 11th day of March 2023, the town of Duxbury, through the Select Board and the Town Manager, offers George D. Wadsworth its grateful thanks for his profound dedication to the town and wishes him a long and happy retirement.
So I just wanted to add a little bit to that, and we have a citation here from Senator O'Connor, myself as well. I had the privilege of serving with George on the Planning Board for just four years out of the 40 years that you served the town, which is incredible to think about. We're really, we're losing some major, major titans of our civic community here in Duxbury today. I hope we recognize that. George, you know, just I salute you and your service to the town. I know anytime I was a new member on the Planning Board, it was a lot of material to learn at a quick time. You were so grateful, so generous with your time to help me along with Amy and the rest of my Planning Board members, who I see some here in the audience. Anytime the issue of water came up, we knew you were the acknowledged expert about these issues, and, you know, everyone had to stop and kind of listen. And you were such a great colleague to work with, to work through. I'm really just grateful. You know, again, I wouldn't have been here serving as state representative if I hadn't served as, on the Planning Board, and I'm really grateful to you and the other members of the Board that were so supportive and helpful to me. So we want to just personally say that we have a citation here to read as well. Senator O'Connor, you want to do the honors? Your eyesight is younger than mine.
George, this is in recognition and congratulations to you in the 40 years of dedicated service and for your standing commitment to the town of Duxbury and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the Massachusetts Senate and House of Representatives wish you nothing but best wishes for continued success. And one of the things, as Josh had hit on, all of the people who retired today, I like to say the word that these are the people who turn towns into communities. So thank you, George, and thank you to everybody who has served this community. Thank you.
I've enjoyed the opportunity to serve this town for a few years, certainly, and met a lot of people, which was fun. And most of them are here, and that's even more fun. But I do, I do say that I want to thank, this was a surprise to me that this was coming up. I was told about it a little while, a little while, not very long ago. And so it's, it's sort of fun. So thanks for putting down some nice words for me.
All right, now on to the town meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping notes to start with. There are microphones available for your use if, when the time comes to speak. There are four of them in the back left, or my left, your right, of the, of the, at the back of, the back of the bottom section, on the left and right, where our microphones for public use. And then at the bottom of the stairs, for the upper section, on the left and right, are microphones for people's use. A former moderator friend Wyler has been sworn in as Assistant Moderator, should the need arise. And assisted living devices are in the very back of the room, should you, should you want to use them. They, they will be distributed. Fire chief has requested, I point out, the fire exits. There are a number in this, in this room, at the very back of the auditorium, on the upper level, on the left and right in the back of this lower section, and then at the front of the auditorium, on my left, there is the fire exit as well. Also, I ask that you not block the, block the exits or, or the aisles with chairs. I request that cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session, except for public safety officials. And for your information, this meeting is being taped. I'd like to review some, some town meeting procedures, and looking out, this seems to be a pretty seasoned group, so this shouldn't take a long time. We will be using electronic voting. When you came in, you were issued with a device. When the time comes for a vote, if you press one, it's yes, two is no. If you change your mind, just press the button that you meant to press, and it, and it will magically change on the little screen that you see. You will know that your vote is being counted if you see received down the bottom of that little window. That means that it has been, it has been received and it has been counted. In the event that we have a failure of the, of the system, and God knows, I don't want to see that happen, we will be doing hand counts, and in those cases, we will have tellers who will go up and down the aisles and count. You'll need to hold your device up. They will only count votes from people whose device they see being held up in the air. When I do call for a vote, this light to my right will turn on. While that light is on, it means you can, you can vote. When the light goes off, you no longer can vote. We'll leave it on for about 20 seconds. And in a second, I'm going to give you an opportunity to use it as a vote. We're about to start the special town meeting. As you noticed, we have a special town meeting within the annual that happens as a regular basis. The annual town meeting is dealing with items that will start on July 1st of this year, 2023. That's fiscal '24. And in this case, we are dealing with items that have come up and need to be adjusted within the current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. There was a, there was a handout in back for the, for the warrant for the special town meeting, and the procedure will be as follows. Upon completion of these announcements, I'll entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting, which was called for today. We will then go back and convene the annual town meeting. Not, not quite. We have one other, one other housekeeping issue, Mrs. Sullivan. Non-voters' permission to speak. At this point in the town meeting, we customarily vote to give permission to speak to town employees and officials who are not registered voters in the town of Duxbury. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to allow town, our town employees and officials to speak should the occasion arise. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Sullivan?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made in second, and I'm going to ask for, it's a majority vote. When the light goes on, press one for yes, two for no. The light's on. One for yes, two for no. Voting's closed. The motion passes 108 to two. Unless I hear some objection, I'll, I'll treat this vote as your permission for these people to speak at the annual town meeting should, at the special town meeting if the occasion arises. This meeting is covered by the statutes of our town bylaw and town meeting time. In addition, I suggest we follow the following procedures so that we can abduct the business of this meeting in an orderly fashion. After I've announced, we are considering an article. The article will be moved by the Finance Committee, and their recommendations will be heard. I will then give the proposer of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. In those cases where there's an organized, organized opposition, I will recognize them as well. The article, I also request that speakers limit their remarks to a maximum of five minutes, and ask that speakers do not attempt to be recognized for a second time on the discussions of an article until everybody else has had their opportunity to speak. Lengthy or complicated motions for amendments should be given to us in writing so that we are not confused and get the right, the right wording. And finally, and I think this is a pretty seasoned group, I want to mention, a motion to, for the previous question, a motion for the previous question is non-debatable, and is often used when people feel that they've heard enough and that we need to stop debating the article and move on and vote. If that motion is made, it is a motion that just ends debates, ends debate. We will then go and vote on the main article. I will not accept a motion to move the previous question from somebody who has been speaking to an article in order to avoid a situation where somebody gets the last word in. I'll now entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting, which was called for this date. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. The light's out. The result's in. It's 110 to two. Gosh, we picked up two new votes. I, I just didn't notice them coming in. So the special town meeting, which was called for this Saturday, March 11th, at this place, will now come to order. Will the clerk please read the call for service of the town meeting and, and warrant? I'm sorry, call for service.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury, Special Town Meeting Warrant, Saturday, March 11, 2023, at 9:10 a.m., Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street. Plymouth S.S., greetings to the Constable of the Town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street, in said Duxbury on Saturday, the 11th day of March 2023, next, at 9:10 a.m., for a special town meeting for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof, as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3.1 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting. Given under our hands the 6th day of February 2023, Select Board, Fernando Gattart Chair, Cynthia Lad Fiorini Vice Chair, Michael McGee, Theodore Flynn, Amy McNabb. Plymouth S.S., February 8, 2023. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitchell LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
We will dispense with the reading of the warrant for the special town meeting, and now for the business. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a, may we have a motion for Article Number One?
Article One, Supplemental Appropriations. I move that the town appropriate $165,000 by transfer from free cash to supplement appropriations previously voted under Article Five of the Annual Town Meeting of March 12, 2022, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, for line items in the budgets of the various town departments as follows. One, Fire Department salaries. Previous budget, $3,133,224. Adjustment, $60,000. Revised budget, $3,195,224. Funding source, free cash. 193. Well, we obviously should have worn the other glasses that didn't match this outfit. Central Fuel Depot, $213,500 is the original budget. Adjustment, $105,000. Revised budget is $318,500 from free cash. Total adjustments, $165,000.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to support.
And I would also mention, the Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend this as well. Any questions or comments? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is on. Voting is closed. Motion passes 118 to zero. And I'm going to suggest we move it down to, let's make it 15 seconds. We'll slowly speed this up. Article Number Two, Mrs. Sullivan.
Unpaid bills. I move that the town appropriate $9,090.20 by transfer from free cash to pay the following unpaid bills of the previous fiscal years, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sums as follows. Line one, ACV Environmental Services, DPW Transfer Station. The amount is $3,032 from free cash. Two, Green Matress Recycling, DPW Transfer Station, $675 free cash. Three, Green Pages Information Technology, $4,455 from free cash. Four, Associated Elevator Facilities, $195 free cash. Five is FW Web for the Police Department, $269.20 from free cash. And six, Lauren, and I'm, Lauren, if I mispronounce your last name, God forgive me. H? Is that? Works. The check will not bounce. Municipal Services, $464 from free cash.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend. Select Board, 4-0 to recommend.
This is a pretty standard article that comes up every year. The reason for it is that fiscal year ends on June 30th. If people don't get their bills in on time, if we don't process them on time, or something gets lost in the mail and gets delayed, we can't pay that with this year's funds unless you give us permission. It takes a nine-tenth vote. And so having said that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of paying the bills, please press one. All those opposed, say no. Voting is on. Voting's closed. Article passes 125 to nothing. Article Three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Upgrade access control systems and cameras at town buildings. I move that the town I move that the town appropriate the sum of $147,100 for the purposes of upgrading access control systems and cameras at the police headquarters, council on aging, and the old and new town hall buildings, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $27,482.59 from free cash, and transfer the sum of $119,617.41 from unexpended balances of the following articles. So, Article 6 from FY13, Implement Service Desk Systems, no idea, $4,000. Article 6 from FY13, New Data Center, $7,311.86. Article 6, 1, Number 3, FY15, Townwide Fiber Network Phase 3, $29,229.89. Article 6, 1-1, Redundant Fiber Link on Mayflower Street, $1,001,4566. Article 6-1, FY22, ATM Domain Network Email Reorganization, $25,025. Article 7-3, FY22, Annual Town Meeting ISP Consolidation Redesign, $5,00417. Article 7, FY22, Annual Town Meeting, Microsoft SharePoint, $10,000. Article 7-6, FY22, Annual Town Meeting, Microsoft Office Training, $10,000. Article 7-7, FY22, ATM Blue Beam Software, $3,088. Article 7-8, FY22, Annual Town Meeting, Viewpoint Cloud and Blue Beam Inter, $4,400. Article 6-4, FY23, GIS Flyover, $20,000. And that totals $119,617.41. Fiscal, Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board 4-0 to recommend, Fiscal Advisory 5-0 to recommend.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions? Sensing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Motion passes 123 to 2. Article 4, Mrs. Sullivan.
Pension Reserve Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $105,000 to the Pension Reserve Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $105,000 from free cash to said fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
And do we have any questions or comments? Sensing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. Motion passes 125 to nothing. Article 5, Mrs. Sullivan.
Other Post-Employment Benefits, otherwise known as OPEB. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $300,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $300,000 from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
I think we have a question in the far back on my right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken McCarthy, 151 Flintlock Drive. First, let me say thanks to you, to Friend Wyler, and to Ms. Kelly for the handling of the February 28th Special Town Meeting, an extraordinary event. Over 10 times the number of people that are here today showed up for that issue, and it was extremely difficult, and I think the three of you handled it as well as could have been done. So first, let me thank you. Second, I'd like to see if we could get some explanation from my understanding of what's been provided to us. Our accrued liability was something like $40 million in 2021 and $63 million in 2022. I would like to see if we could have some explanation of why that's very significant increase, over 50% in one year. And third, while I have the thing, I would like to recommend that our Finance Committee and Finance Department look at increasing our minimal annual contribution. We have not done so for the last 10 years. If you look at what our liability is today, it would take 200 years to meet that liability at this contribution level. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So our balance of our OPEB liability at the beginning, June 30, 2021, was $45 million. We had passage of time, service costs, interest payments added to that, $1.6 million. We did have assumption changes. We do have an actuarial valuation done every year, and they make a bunch of assumptions about people, you know, how long people are going to live, when they're going to retire, what our interest rate should be, et cetera. So those assumption changes were 16, well, $17 million of that variance. So that brings you pretty close to that 63.5 that we are at now. As far as those assumption changes... So those assumption changes were due to GASB 75 standards, where the discount rate had changed from 6.25 to 5.71%, increasing the disclosed liability by approximately 4.3 million. Based on actuarial research, they adopted a different model for future projected healthcare costs, increasing disclosed liability by approximately 6.9 million. And then also due to updated guidance related to the implementation of certain actuarial standards, they updated methodology for calculating expected claims, which increased disclosed liability by approximately $5.6 million. In regards to the gentleman's question on, currently, we are proposing, it has been a long-range plan to put into OPEB $300,000 every year from free cash. And then once the accrued liability on our pension, which is supposedly, right now, it's due to be retired by 2030, then we would be taking that difference of almost 1.4... Let me see, 1.8. We're going to have 1.8. So another $1.5 million from that will be added to the 300, and then we'll be starting to put in like about $1.8 million each year, starting in 2030, once that accrued liability is paid off. That's been the current plan, along with our actuarial... Our actuarial person who's helped us develop that plan going into the future.
Any other questions? Sensing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. And the motion passes 124 to 2. Article 6, Mrs. Sullivan.
Stabilization Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $250,000 to the Stabilization Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $250,000 from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those, voting is open. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 126 to 0. Article 7, Mrs. Sullivan.
Appropriate Funds Into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $350,000 to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $350,000 from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Fiscal Advisory 7-0 to recommend, and Select Board 4-0 to recommend.
Do we have any questions or comments? Sensing none, I'll call for a vote. Voting's open. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Vote passes 126 to 1. Article 8, Mrs. Sullivan.
Appropriate Funds Into the Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $225,000 to the Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $225,000 from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
Any questions or comments? I'll now call for a vote on Article Number 8. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 124 to 2. Article Number 9, which deals with collective bargaining agreements, has two motions in it. The first motion, Motion Number 1, Mrs. Sullivan.
Motion 1, Fund Collective Bargaining Agreements, Union Contract, Town of Duxbury Firefighters. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $54,100 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Duxbury Permanent Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters Local 2167, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2025, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $54,100 from free cash.
Checkup.
Finance Committee voted 9-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 123 to 1. Mrs. Sullivan.
Union Contract, Town of Duxbury Public Safety Dispatches, Motion 2. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Public Safety Dispatches Union, MCOP Local 376A, for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2025, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $25,000 from free cash.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 9-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 117 to 4. Mrs. Sullivan, the final article in the special town meeting.
Article 10, Subject: Matching Grant Funds. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $250,000, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $250,000 from free cash to be expended under the direction of the Select Board and/or Town Manager to be used to provide for the town's local match gifts and/or grants committed to and/or received by the town from time to time.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend, Select Board voted 4-0 to recommend, Fiscal Advisory voted 7-0 to recommend.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 124 to 4. That completes the business and the warrant for the special town meeting. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The special town meeting. Second. All those in favor, say, all those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Motion passes 83 to nothing. We'll now reconvene the town meeting at Article Number 1.
Article Number 1, Election of Officers. To bring their votes, this does not require a vote, I don't believe, but election of officers to bring their votes for the following offices: two Select Board members, one assessor, two School Committee members, two Planning Board members, two Library Trustees, one Duxbury Housing Authority member for a term of five years, one Duxbury Housing Authority member for an unexpired term of four years. And three questions. One, a debt exclusion for the Community Preservation Act, which I think you'll be hearing about later, a debt exclusion for the seawall-related beach nourishment, and a debt exclusion for seawall construction. That's it?
That's it.
That's it. Do you want Article 2? Do you want article, article two? It's, permit? Right, but I'm reading the ballot.
You may have noticed we were having a little conversation up here. The issue has to do with question one that you see and that you see in the. So article number one that Mrs. Sullivan mentioned is actually printed in detail at the very end of the warrant. And it says that question one, the Community Preservation Act is a debt exclusion, when in fact, it's not a debt exclusion. You may remember in October, we had a special town meeting. One of the items we we acted on was to increase the amount, the rate of for the Community Preservation Act back to three percent. We voted that at the special town meeting, but it was a two-part process to increase that amount. Part one was a vote at town meeting where people could vote for or against it. And part two is to have a a vote at a town election where people can vote yes or no. So if you were in favor of it at the special town meeting, when you, for it to be, for it to be ratified, to become effective, it needs to also get a positive vote, a yes vote at the at the election and needs to pass the election. If you're opposed to it, you still get a chance to vote against it, and that would be at the election. Does that make sense? Yeah? Okay, so it's, should not have been described as a, should not have been described as a debt exclusion. Yes, I think somebody had a, has a question. Could I ask you to? And identify yourself, please.
I don't get this. I mean, first of all, I'm Kathy Palmer. I live on Powder Point, but.
Thank you.
Article one, it's throwing, it looks like it's throwing three separate issues together, and we have to vote yes or no for all of them.
We're not.
No.
It is no vote.
I'm sorry.
Vote is at the ballot.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. We could have had this conversation.
Article one. So. Please, if if I could, the sum and substance of what you've said, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you remember we used to mail these out to people, and it would be useful if they could get them in advance. Comments, as so noted. And article number one takes no vote because it really serves as a reminder that we have an election two weeks from today, eight AM to eight PM, Madam Clerk? Eight AM to eight PM at the SEAL Building, which is the building across the street by the football field. Article two, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town receive the reports of town officials, boards, committees, and commissions.
Second.
Everybody approve this.
Mr. Reed, do we have any reports to be heard? There are no reports. Thank you. Article number three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Compensation of elected officials. I move that the town fix the compensation of the elected town officers for the twelve month period beginning July first, two thousand twenty three, as set forth in the column entitled Finance Committee Recommended F Y twenty four as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight zero to recommend. Select board, three zero one to recommend.
Do we have any questions on article number three? No questions or comments? I'll ask for a vote on article number three. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion passes a hundred and twenty six to two. Article four, Mrs. Sullivan.
Funding of salaries. I move that the town appropriate the sum of four hundred and eighty one thousand dollars to implement the personnel policy and provide funding for any other salary or compensation not addressed by the personnel policy as printed in the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, four hundred, appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand dollars from the Rock Enterprise Fund revenue, and to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from the water retained earnings, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight zero to recommend. Select board voted five zero to recommend.
Before we take up this article, I want to mention that there are a number of motions that are going to be made in this.
No, one, that's it.
I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
You're thinking of five.
I'm looking, I'm starting to look at five.
You're looking ahead.
Yes. If I haven't confused you, we're going to vote on exactly what Mrs. Sullivan talked about, funding for salaries. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is on. Voting is now closed. Motion passes a hundred and twenty nine to three. Next article is article five. Before before we make a motion, I want to make some comments about it. We will deal with article five the way we have in years gone by. There are multiple motions that happen under article five. The first two motions deal with what you might think of as the operating budget. That is, the town services is motion one, and there are a number of funding sources for it. And you will be asked to take a vote on that. And then you're going to be asked to take a vote on the next motion, which is the school budget. And after you've taken those two votes and we settle on numbers for those, you're going to be asked to take a third vote that will just memorialize the fact that we have voted those numbers on one and two, on the first two motions, the operating budget of the town and the school budget. Then we will start to deal with some of the other art, some of the other town departments, the Water Enterprise Fund and the so-called Rock are also done as an enterprise fund. Those require separate votes. Those are things that we've done before in the past. Hopefully, it sounds familiar. Having said that, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a vote, a motion for article five? What was it?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so excited about how fast we were moving through things that I should have mentioned that we have two presentations for article number five, or two comments. Mr. Reed has some comments, and Mrs. Sullivan has some comments to share with you.
Good morning. F Y twenty three, working towards F Y twenty four has been an interesting ride. We all said goodbye to COVID again, and we're trying to work our budgets, making sense of the new normal. We've debated seawalls, sand, labor costs, coastal resiliency, bed and breakfasts, keeping the beach open, and pickleball. We've said goodbye to some key players in town, which has been impactful, and we have welcomed some new folks to take their place. The department heads, Joe Grady, Gordon Cushing, Valerie Massad, Kevin Nord, Steve McDonald, and Michael Thorpe. And our, I don't like to talk about Q, but, you know, he's leaving. The, it's, it's, it's difficult. It's a big transition. So we've had our work cut out for us. We've also coupled that with some unprecedented turnover. And that, I think, as you've followed the news over the past year, you've seen labor costs. People have had a difficult time hiring for positions. Positions and the cost of them have increased, I think, due to scarcity of employees and inflation. And we have been dealing with that. We have had more people, not for any reason other than monetary, in the most part, leave the town and work other places because they could be compensated in a different fashion. And it's been a challenge. We have experienced great loss, and we have witnessed amazing kindness and support throughout the community. So as you say, it's been, it's been interesting as we've worked through this budget. We have met since August, reviewing budgets, meeting with departments, and the, and we've been bugging Q for more data, which he has so happily supplied. But regardless of whether he was happy or not, the data that we had to work with this year surpassed anything that I have seen in thirty years. The decisions that we came to were based in trend analysis, what facts, what we've spent before, where we think it's going, the impact of borrowing. They made the decisions thoughtful, straightforward, and to, I think, the town's best interests. And I will tell you that it is Q's influence in that department that has made this possible. We can never thank him enough. The, we have left our crystal ball, and now we can look at budgets on a fact-based basis. And I feel that the legacy that he has left for us is that we will continue to do so. We bring you an operating budget, the budget that we want you to vote for, for ninety one million, five eighty five, eight seventy one. So that's that. And a capital budget of four million, five sixty four, five twenty four, and articles if fully voted for that equal twenty three million, two sixty nine, seven ninety four. These are big numbers, numbers certainly that some of us that have been doing this for a long time find a little shocking, but that is the reality of the day. Good news is that we can cover those expenses for F Y twenty four. Why is that? We still are benefiting from some of the monies that we received from the federal, state, and county governments for COVID. And that has allowed us to have some extra free cash. We also had monies that were left over because of COVID that some programs were reduced or not run at all. So the money, the articles that were voted to support them were not used. So those monies then rolled into the availability to spend them on other items this year. That is over. We have expended those monies. There is not going to be, to my knowledge, and you never know what's going to happen, but more of that type of funding available to us. So we are now back to our more normalized tax levy, debt exclusion, you know, new growth type of funding for, plus federal and state, but to a lesser degree. The town, oops, sorry. We are concerned, and we talk about this a lot when we're deliberating, and which you are all welcome, and to hear, I think that a lot of it's been on on Zoom, so there's been many faces that haven't been there before, which is great. Inflation and rising labor costs and rising interest costs have been three of the things that we need to be mindful of as we go forward from twenty four to twenty five. The raising labor costs, I mean, we've learned something this year that if we are not mindful of that, our employees, not because they're unhappy here, but they will leave because they have to support their families. And if they can earn more money at another town or municipality, then that is a decision that they regretfully will make. We have large capital expenditures that are in our future. We are talking today about the seawall and beach nourishment. They're not going away. The bridge, it is still wearing out, and we are still going to have to deal with it. The D P W facility is moving towards being built, and that will be an impact to our tax bills as that is, as that is completed. We are, the schools have given us a much appreciated heads up that they're considering the renovation and or replacement of Alden Lower. So we are mindful that that is, that is coming for the, for the school's department's future needs. I think that that's all I'm going to say. So that will impact our our tax burden. The answers, the answers to to support next, not next year, not F Y twenty four, we've, we've done it. We've balanced the budget through a lot of give and take, but it's F Y twenty five that I feel I should have you start to consider. It is either going to be a reduction in services for the community, or we are going to have to discuss a word that we do not welcome easily, which is an override. And we are not talking about it now, but we are mindful that it is a possibility. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention it here today. We will continue to work with the amazing people at Town Hall and our committees that that come before us, the citizens that come before us. And we are so blessed that people are so passionate and hardworking and provide us with the ability to try to make thoughtful and careful decisions for our community. And on that, I really have to say, what town has a finance director named John Quincy Adams? But Duxbury. His, I know we've, we've vetted him, we've applauded him, we've stood up, we've given him plaques. None of it touches the hem of what this town owes this man, for he has brought us to a level of knowledge and accountability and ability to go forward with good, sound decisions that cannot be overestimated. And the finance committee is in mourning. I didn't wear black, I will soon, because we will miss him desperately. And I just wanted to say that. But thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for attending town meeting and the special town meeting. We certainly do appreciate it. Slightly different crowd than we had a week ago Tuesday. It's good to see you all here, the faithful and devoted. First off, I want to wish Mike McGee a happy birthday. It's his birthday. This is how he celebrates his birthday. And tomorrow is Nancy O'Connor's birthday. They're both turning forty, so wishing him a happy birthday. All of the notes and the information that we'd like to share with you are actually in a handout out front. They're available on the tables when you walked in, and as such, I'm going to spare my reading that to you. You can look at it at your leisure. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us. In that document, you will find additional commentary, and I encourage you to read through it. And I also invite you to visit, to visit Duxbury's online budget information tool, which can be found by visiting the ClearGov website, cleargov.com, and then typing Duxbury, M A in the search field. That information's in that document. This new information, which has actually been live since January, is the result of the remarkable work done by our financial team and overseen by our finance director, John Adams. It's a terrific resource that represents countless hours of data collection and presentation, all boiled down into one easy-to-follow source with lots of great information. And John, you certainly have our sincerest gratitude in coordinating that effort and putting it all together. We used to show up at the finance committee meetings with reams of paper. Some will remember that we'd had big fat notebooks, and my God, we would go through them for hours. Now they all use tablets, and everything's online. It's remarkable. And you all can do the same, and you can see the same stuff that they look at. It's wonderful. I do want to briefly mention that I'm pleased to say that the F Y twenty four operating budget is balanced, and it's being presented for your consideration without having to resort to layoffs through the use of stabilization funds and without a recommendation for an override measure to do so at this time. As Betsy mentioned, that will be the subject of conversation over the coming year, and we, we aim to try and figure out how we're going to get through F Y twenty five. This year's process was filled with its share of challenges, and each of those challenges were met through the hard work and tireless efforts of the departmental staff you see here this morning. And since the last time we met, and we all had a chance to get together for an annual town meeting, we've had a few staffing changes that you've heard about at the department head level. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to some of the following individuals in order of their arrival and their new roles. Rob Riordan, our Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. If you could take a stand, please. Chris Ryan, our Planning Director. Steve Studley, our Recreation Director. Nancy Ruffar, our Conservation Administrator. To my right, over here on the keyboard, Maurice Myrie, our CTO. And rounding out the band, I have Mike Carbone, our Acting Police Chief. Thank you. We have worked closely with these individuals and all of the department heads to again provide a budget for your consideration that I believe illustrates our ability to live within our means while still delivering the same quality and caliber of services that we've all come to expect. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of them and their respective staffs for their hard work and their dedication and to please know that I sincerely appreciate all of your efforts. I'd also like to thank the board, the Select Board, excuse me, the Finance Committee, the Fiscal Advisory Committee, for their continued support, encouragement, and direction throughout the process. I truly appreciate their observations and insights along the way as we explore new ideas together to help make this process clearer and more open for all involved. We all realize that the fiscal waters ahead won't always be calm, but we share a commitment of working together to find safe passage. Finally, as many of you know, this is the last down meeting for our Finance Director, John Quincy Adams, whose name I love to say because they named a train stop after you, as you just pointed out to me. John, as I've said for many years, I've always enjoyed our conversations and working alongside one another and I will truly miss your insights, expertise, sage advice, and sense of humor. You've left a tremendous legacy here in Duxbury and I, along with everyone assembled here, wish you sincerely a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Thank you so much. Also, I'd also like to say, to bid farewell to my friend Darren McFarland. Are you here, Darren? He's probably up in the back. He's the guy that puts this whole show together for us in terms of the putting it all together. So he's leaving, I want to say thank you to him. And that's all I've got, so let's talk about the budget. Thank you all.
Well. I just, yes, I'm ready, I just.
See, we are watching our pennies. There's only one of these. Annoying, but that's what we have to do. Subject, operating budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $44,142,141 as the general fund operating budget of the town as printed in the warrant in lines 1 through 78 and lines 81 through 92 for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $43,47,264 and to transfer the sum of $1,094,877, of which $78,256 shall come from the Waterways Improvement Fund to lines 38 and 39. Of $135,202 shall come from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue for lines 13, 48, 81, 82, 83, and 84. $303,475 shall come from the PEG Access Fund revenue for line 20. $200,000 shall come from the Pension Reserve Fund for line 84. $308,626 shall come from the Fund Balance Bond Premium for lines 88 and 89. $13,558 shall come from the sale of real estate funds for lines 88 and 89. $15,688 shall come from Seawall Betterment Reserve for lines 88 and 89. $40,072 shall come from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation line 32, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance voted 8-0 to recommend. Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend.
Now the Chair, Betsy, the Chair of the Finance Committee, will read each of the line items. If you have a question or want additional information or wish to change an amount, I'm going to ask you to shout "hold", we'll then go back and, and deal with each of those hold items that are being held. Mrs. Sullivan.
All right. We ready? General Government, Town Meeting, Line 1. Expenses, $2,200. Line 2, Moderator's Salaries, $40. Three, or the Selectman Manager's Office, Line 3, Salaries, Expenses, $13,939. Historical Commission, Expenses, $1,000. I'm looking down, so if you want hold, yell it out so that I'll look up because I don't want to blast past anybody that wants to, can talk about this later. Finance Committee, Salaries, $1. That's mine. Expenses, $210. Accounting, Line 8, Salaries, $383,219. Expenses, $12,765. Audit, Line 10, Expenses, $52,000. Assessor, Line 11, Salaries, $251,758. Expenses, $57,520. Treasurer Collector, Line 13, Salaries, $297,355. Expenses, $109,770. Legal Services, Line 15, Expenses, $185,200. Human Resources, Line 16, Salaries, $230,324. Expenses, $43,025. Information Systems, Line 18, Salaries, $266,029. Line 19, Expenses, $561,350. Public Television Access Services, Line 20, Expenses, $303,475. Tax Title, Line 21, Expenses, $7,500. Town Clerk, Line 22, Salaries, $191,815. Expenses, Line 29, $40,495. Conservation Commission, Line 24, Salaries, $136,589. Expenses, Line 25, $13,686. Planning Board, Line 26, Salaries, $145,111. Line 27, Expenses, $12,205. Facilities Management, Line 28, Salaries, $259,455. Twenty, Line 29, Expenses, $209,437. There you go. Public Safety. Police, Line 30, Salaries, $3,783,243. Line 31, Expenses, $364,756. Fire Department, Line 32, Salaries, $3,286,790. Line 33, Expenses, $404,735. Municipal Services, Line 34, Salaries, $607,890. Line 35, Expenses, $28,250. Harbor Coastal Management, Line 36, Salaries, $255,270. Line 37, Expenses, $50,180. Regional Dispatch, Line 38, Assessment, $516,341. Public Works. Central Building Services, Line 39, Salaries, $58,057. Line 40, Expenses, $151,575. Tarkland Community Center, Line 41, Expenses, $6,100. Grab some water here. Animal Control, Line 42, Salaries, $90,630. Expenses, $7,420. Lands and Natural Resources, Line 44, Salaries, $527,997. Line 45, Expenses, $54,800. Central Fuel Depot, 46, Line 46, Expenses, $368,500. DPW Administration, Line 47, Salaries, $307,296. Line 48, Expenses, $79,900. Vehicle Maintenance, Line 49, Salaries, $188,525. Line 50, Expenses, $180,500. Highway Road Maintenance, Line 51, Salaries, $544,193. Line 52, Expenses, $103,700. Snow and Ice, Line 53, Salaries, $63,750. Streetlights, Line 55, Expenses, $51,000. Transfer Station, Line 56, Salaries, $268,955. Line 57, Expenses, $749,500. Sewer, 50, Line 58, Salaries, $17,459. Line 59, Expenses, $260,100. The Cemetery, Line 60, Salaries, $460,696. Line 61, Expenses, $229,700. Human Services. Council on Aging, Line 62, Salaries, $517,329. Expenses, Line 63, $149,140. Veteran Services, Line 64, Salaries, $47,550. Expenses, $97,435. Plymouth County Cooperative Extension, Line 66, Expenses, $500. Library and Recreation, Line 67, Salaries, $10,34,74. Line 68, Expenses, $420,150. Recreation, Line 69, Salaries, $241,012. Oops, okay. Line 70, Expenses, $6,325. Oops. Percy Walker Pool, Line 71, Salaries, $223,272. Expenses, $146,267. North Hill Golf Course, Line 73, Expenses, $1,500. Beach Lifeguards, Line 74, Salaries, $43,200. Expenses on Line 77, $2,800. Okay. Town and School Shared Costs. Employee Benefits, Line 80, Medicare, $700.
Wait a second.
What did I skip?
Mrs. Sullivan, I think, I think we missed.
Oh, my God, my favorite. And I skipped it.
Seventy-six and seventy-seven.
It was too exciting. Sorry about that. Beach Operations, Line 76, Salaries, $264,613. Line 77, Expenses, $65,461. Good catch. Back to Town and School Shared Costs, Employee Benefits, Line 80, Medicare, Line 81, Life Insurance, $10,00978. Line 82, Employee and Retiree Health Insurance, $8,165,425. Line 83, Contributory Pensions, $5,497,822. Eight-hundred-twenty-two. Line 84, Non-Contributory Pensions, $10,000. Line 85, Workman's Comp, $356,422. Other Shared Costs. Fire Liability Insurance, $682,605. Reserve Fund, $180,000. Debt Service, Town and School. Principal Payments, $4,970,000. Interest on Bonded Debt, $1,761,188. Interest on Temporary Notes, $232,600. Bond Expense, $10,000. That's Motion 1. One hold, we've got.
Line 61.
Recreation Salaries. Okay. So he took it back, no hold. So there we have it. Motion 1, Mr. Moderator.
Do we have any other questions on, on Motion 1? The budget that was just presented. Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is open. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Would you like a bottle of water, Mrs. Sullivan?
Birthday voice giving it to me. All right. We ready for Motion 2?
No.
No, wait, oh, wait, the vote, oh, sorry.
We're going to count this first.
Fine.
Motion passes 154 to 9. Motion 2, Mrs. Sullivan.
School Operating Budget. Um, School Operating Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $41,667,002 as the general fund school operating budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $41,667,002 to be expended under the direction of the School Committee.
Second.
The Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend and the Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. The School, Schools Operating Fund, Line 78, Salaries, Expenses for Line 79 are $7,736,270.
Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on the school budget. All, voting is open. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed and the motion passes 154 to 11. Motion 3, Mrs. Sullivan.
Operating Budget, Total Budget. Total Budget Summary, all motions. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty-five million, eight hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars as the operating budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three, exclusive of the Water Department and the Water Department Debt Service for the purposes and in the amounts specified in the motions previously voted under Article Five. And to meet this appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-four million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and transfer the sum of one million, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars in accordance with the transfers voted in motions previously voted under this Article Five.
Second.
Okay. The, I can repeat the motion. Motion one was forty-four million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one forty-one. Motion two, School Budget, forty-one million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand and two dollars for the total of the eighty-five million, eight hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three.
As I mentioned before, this motion number three really just ta- what it does is take the vote that you took on number one, motion one, and vote on motion two and puts them together in all, in one particular motion. Once you pass this, if you pass this, if you pass this motion, then we will have an operating budget for the town and school for fiscal twenty-four. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in, I'm gonna call for a vote now, then. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion passes one hundred and sixty-three to eight. Mrs. Sullivan?
Subject.
Motion number four.
Subject, Rock Operating Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars from the Rock Enterprise Fund revenue for the purposes and in the amounts specified below to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Line ninety-two. For Regional Dispatch, salaries, two million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. Line ninety-three. Expenses, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five for the total of three million, two ninety-six, three forty-one.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion passes one hundred and fifty-three to six. Motion five, Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay. Water Enterprise Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of two million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue for the purposes and in the amounts specified below and further that a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars be raised from Water Enterprise Fund revenue to implement, to fund indirect costs associated with the Water Enterprise Fund appropriated in the general fund as identified in Article One, motion one, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-one to re- eight-zero to recommend, sorry, and Select Board voted five-zero to recommend. The Operating Budget, line ninety-four. Salaries, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Line ninety-five. Expenses, one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Debt Service Water, line ninety-six. Principal Payments, three hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Line ninety-seven. Interest on Bonded Debt, ninety-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Interest on Temporary Debt, line ninety-eight, ten thousand dollars. Line ninety-nine. Bond Expense, ten thousand dollars. Yep, we're already seconded. We're good.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? Then I'm gonna call for a vote. Okay. I'm gonna call for a vote in just one moment. Thank you. We're ready. Okay. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion passes one hundred and sixty-three to five. Article Six is our, starts our capital budget, but before we open that, Mr., Mr. Chin, who is Chair of the Fiscal Advisory Committee, has a presentation to make.
That's a PowerPoint, right?
I'm sorry. Hi, Jared.
Excuse me.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
See if it's on, see if it's on.
I didn't get the memo that there was no presentations required today, so you'll have to bear with me. Now that we spent ninety-one million, we can have a presentation to spend the last four and a half million.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, before I start, uh, I would like to reiterate the comments made earlier. Ted, thank you very much, uh, for your service to the town, uh, your mentorship, uh, over the years. It started when I was a Cub Scout. Goes through today. And John Q, um, the town owes you a humongous debt of gratitude. Uh, these last five years have been really wonderful. You've taught me a lot, um, and I appreciate, uh, you being so patient with me and your friendship. So thank you so much. All right. Okay. Fiscal Advisory. We are a nine volunteer, uh, group that is appointed by the moderator and our job is to make recommendations to the Select Board, Town Manager, Finance Director, Finance Committee, and to you, Town Meeting. We approve the current capital requests, uh, but our real charge is to think about the long-term needs of the town. Next slide. Our decision-making process. Do we have enough money to pay for everything? How do the requests fit into the town's long-term plans and priorities, including capital expenditures and use of borrowed funds? We have adequate future revenues to meet our future needs and how can the town best prepare for the unknowns? Article Six. Article Six, um, the department requests were five million, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Fiscal Advisory approved four million, five hundred and sixty-four dollars for sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, and as Betsy mentioned earlier, um, the spending and the funding we received during COVID and the available free cash is really coming to an end. We were able to approve the majority of the requests that came in because of what's going on, um, in our current financial environment, but that is, uh, that is coming to an end. This is a, these are the motions that you will see. I won't go through them, but, uh, Finance Committee, uh, agreed with our, uh, approved requests, so we are, we are in alignment. The other things that Fiscal Advisory has made recommendations on, um, three of them we've already voted on in the special, uh, but in addition, in this town meeting, uh, we voted on Article Nine, the beach lease, the seawall, the historic district, CPC, uh, tennis courts, and the CPC Chandler School, uh, playground. Our sources of funding, I won't go through them all here, but, uh, these are the things that are available to the town and the things that we think about, these fund balances, uh, as we approve capital projects throughout the year. Uh, the capital budgeting process, FAC's goals is to prioritize, uh, requests and determine which projects to recommend for funding. The fact that something didn't get approved this year does not mean that it was not important. Most of these requests will come back next year, um, and it's important that we realize that new requests come on top of those every year. Just for, in terms of what we, what is guiding us, the definition of what is capital is something that costs more than twenty-five thousand and has a lifespan of more than five years. We try to spend two to five percent, uh, on capital every year. Funding for capital, uh, these are in the, the financial policies that are found online, but, you know, forty to sixty percent of free cash should be spent annually, uh, on capital in the town. Uh, one thing we're very cognizant of, uh, over time is how much debt that the town has taken on. Currently, we have seventy-five million dollars in debt and that those debt payments go through twenty forty-two. The cost of our current debt service is about seven point four million dollars. One point three should roll off in the next five years. There is twenty-six million that the town has not borrowed yet. That's the, um, DPW building, uh, so that will be coming on. That hasn't hit your tax bill yet. Um, in this town meeting, we'll be asked to, um, add to the debt, uh, one point three six-five million in, in Article Six. That goes to the Alden Roof, uh, replacing the boilers at Alden and renovating the, uh, Chandler School, uh, restrooms. In addition, there'll be an article later to fund a twenty million dollar seawall that will be funded twenty-five percent through Betterment's. Our major concern, how will we provide existing services, um, when costs are outpacing revenue growth? I think we've all talked through that today, um, and that, that is a very serious concern for the town going forward. This is just an example of what a twenty million dollar debt might look like with a twenty-year term and a, uh, five percent interest rate. These things, if you want to do the calculations, the links are at the bottom. You can go on to the state website. It's really handy, um, so if you want to see the impact to, um, your tax bill, um, I suggest that you go on there. This presentation is available online, so if you can't read the hyperlinks, it's fine. You can go to the town website and download the presentation. Some of our concerns, there is a, um, a lack of a cognizant, um, listing of, of projects. There's a lot of, um, eh, uh, items out there that have coastal resiliency studies. There's a number of studies in Vision-Duxbury, um, but there's really not a place where all of those have been put together, put dollars against them and prioritize those things so we can, we can make decisions for the town of, you know, the risk, the costs, and the proper sequency of those, these projects over time. It's something that I, that I think we're starting to work on, um, but it is something that, that, that Town Meeting should, should push for. Our recommendations, um, as I mentioned, develop an all-encompassing list of projects by priority. You know, i- increase strategic planning and benchmarking to understand our, our services and needs for the cost, uh, cost for the town. Coordinate with the, the various town committees and multiple funding sources that are out there. Improve the capital request process and really building, uh, a long-term budgeting process for the town. That's all I have. The last couple of slides, if you were really interested in nerding out on the current debt situation, um, it's all there. Like I said, this presentation is available online and you can really get to the details of all these things. Thank you for your time.
Okay. All set for motion one?
Mrs. Sullivan, we're all set for motion one.
All right. Article Six, motion one. General Government Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of two million, six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars as the general government capital budget of the town for the purposes and in the amounts specified as follows. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand and transfer the sum of one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, of which one million, four hundred and nine thousand, sixteen dollars shall come from free cash, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars shall come from Waterways Improvement Receipts Fund, and three hundred and twenty-five thousand from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Finance Committee voted nine-zero to recommend. Fiscal Advisory five-zero to recommend and the Select Board five-zero to recommend. Let me break this down. Sorry.
Do we have any?
No, I've got it. It's just, the light is just difficult, um. Nope, I do not. All right. General Government, Select Board, line one. Powder Point Bridge, three hundred thousand. Facilities Management, line two. Senior Center, HVAC Replacement, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred. Resnor Units, fifty-nine thousand, seventy-four dollars. Duxbury Free Library Building Repairs, twenty thousand. Public Safety, line eight. Patrol Fleet, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Specialty Vehicle Motorcycle, line nine, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. Fire Department, line ten. Ambulance, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Line eleven. Replace the Command Car, sixty-eight thousand. Line twelve. Station Radio Remotes, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Line thirteen. AED Replacements, twenty-two thousand. Harbor Masters Department. Line fourteen. Replace Truck One, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. Line fifteen. Replace Marine Two and Trailer, forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Line sixteen. Tender Float Replacement One, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Line seventeen. Tender Float Replacement Two, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. You okay? On Replacement Two, line seventeen? Is that what you're asking? Or line two is Senior Center HVAC? Senior Center? Okie doke. Do you have it? Okay, great. All right. Public Works. Land and Natural Resources, line eighteen. Replace Truck Number Twenty-Seven. And that is a hundred and one thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Line nineteen. Replace John Deere Tractor, seventy-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars. Transfer Station, line twenty. Replace Mack Truck T-One, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Line twenty-one. Hook Lift T-EIGHTEEN, sixty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Cemeteries, line twenty-two. Replace Toro Utility Cart, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And Public Works total is four seventy-one, four oh seven. Culture and Recreation, Recreation, line twenty-three. Repairs at the Tarkin Pickleball Courts, twenty-five thousand. Is that, are you waving because you want that one held? Okay. Thank you. All right. And that's it? All right, and that's it. So, back to Senior Center HVAC.
And your question is?
I'm sorry, say again?
Oh, sorry.
Oh. Do you want me to go first with the gentleman who has the question? Well, whoever has the question on that line, sing out.
Hi, Wondell Sorey, Bay Ridge Lane, and Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee, and it's perfectly, this spot speaking about replacing the HVAC system, just a query, is it going to make use of alternative technologies such as heat pumps? Are we staying with using fossil fuels?
Yep, Christina, where are you hiding from me? Oh, there you go.
Here we go.
We're going to bring in an expert, I'm going to throw a lifeline out.
Christina Knowles, Director of Facilities. So yes, we'll be looking at, from a placement perspective, the technology that we currently have, and then looking at what we could do as far as heat pumps, mini splits, more energy-efficient compressors, HVAC systems in general.
Thank you, and then there are further items that require, not specific to this project, would you like me to wait, but in general, I had comments about any line item here that dealt with purchase of vehicles, for example, and wanting to know if, again, was being considered as hybrid vehicles, were appropriate? That's, you know, with the command car, SUVs for the police department, so, just wondering if that's been considered too.
So, we didn't do a hold on that one, but what you're, I'm assuming that you're, pardon me, any vehicle, I can't speak to any vehicle, but I can certainly have the public safety group speak to the vehicles that we're discussing in, right now, is, okay?
Thank you very much.
The lady, the second question on HVAC?
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, I thought you had deferred to the other speaker, I apologize.
Hi, Betsy, it's Sue Schofield, James Rowe, good to see you.
No worries, it's all good.
Thank you for everybody that sits down there and puts in all your work. So I'm questioning, how old is the HVAC system? What, is it a complete rebuild of it? And just a little bit more detail would be greatly appreciated.
I have to tell you, I was also shocked, because I was still calling it the new Council on Aging Building, and yeah, not so much.
Thank you.
Sure, so the Council on Aging Building, the original building, was built in 2002, so that main square footage section of 12,000 square feet. Those units were manufactured in January of 2001. The life expectancy of the system and the associated compressors is 20 years, so currently they're 21 years old. By fiscal year '24, they'll be 22 years old. The current refrigerant that is in the system is no longer allowed per the EPA guidelines. We have had 18 work requests entered for various locations within the building with no heat since 2019, and 20 work requests were entered for various locations with no air conditioning since 2019. The current system parts are obsolete, they're harder to obtain, and they're more costly. And then the refrigerant is no longer produced, so if we do need to add refrigerant to the system due to leaks, we have to find that refrigerant through people that still have it, and again, that, that provides it as being a more costly repair. So, that's a little bit of the backstory of what we're looking at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Go ahead with your question, sir.
Dan Kostreva, 239 Elm Street. I believe you said that part of the funding for these items is about a million four from free cash?
Let me go back, yes, $1,409,16 is from free cash.
If this is voted through, what will the balance of free cash still be?
Mr. Adams, you have an answer?
Can I ask, are you talking through, just everything in the special through Article Six?
Just as a cutoff point right now, or what do we expect to be left in free cash if everything that is being transferred from it passes at town meeting?
How about the latter?
Okay, so you want to know what's, what we expect to have left in free cash if everything that is earmarked for has passed?
If everything passed, can?
You want to come on up?
If everything passes, we'll have a balance of 383,400, I can't even remember, two seconds ago.
Let me tell you.
That's close enough.
Three eighty-three, three forty.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
The horse is heading for the barn, kids. Oh, did you all want to talk, and so now the other question would be, did you want to?
The vehicles.
Yeah, do you all want to talk about the hybrids?
The hybrids, right?
Yes.
Good morning, Acting Chief, Mike Carbone. There was a question about whether we're purchasing hybrids, and the answer is yes. We started doing this last year, and it's kind of a, we're Ford, they're Fords, they're police interceptors, and they came out with a hybrid a couple of years ago. We waited a year because we wanted to make sure that there were no issues with them. We did purchase a couple hybrids last year, and they've been all minor issues. We anticipate, and we're working with the Finance Committee and Fiscal Advisory, to see if these vehicles will last longer because there's less idling time, and that's basically when it comes to a police vehicle, is the idling time. You can say there's 60, 70,000 miles on a vehicle, well, the idling time might, might be 200 hours, and that just is like a vehicle with over 100,000. So, the idling time is important, hybrids don't idle as much, so we are seeing whether or not, in the future, the replacement of these vehicles, they will last longer, so there'll be less need for replacement, so, yeah, we are purchasing hybrids.
Good morning, Fire Chief, Rob Bearden. The command car is a Chevy Tahoe, currently that's not available in the hybrid model for police package, so at this point, we're not doing that. This is replacing a vehicle that's about 10 years old with almost 200,000 miles. We're on about a 10-year cycle on our vehicles, we keep them for 10 years, put a lot of mileage on them, but there's no hybrid available at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the pickleball courts?
Julian Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive. My concern is a couple of things. That area, when everybody's up there playing pickleball, can present a concern of safety. There's vehicles parked on the side, they're not in the parking lot or in the driveway, and I feel that that's a concern, taxing our services that we're paying for. The second is, if we're paying for something, and I see people from other towns coming to use, I have a problem with that. They should be charging something to people, set up some kind of system for that, because it's fine to have them, but why are we paying for someone else to use them and taxing our systems?
All right, did, were you, did you think, was there an answer, did you, did you think was coming, or was that just a commentary?
No, I'd like to know why we have to have the, incur these extra costs. I'm sure if there's an incident with somebody having a painting or whatever, there's, that's a tax on our services, it's not necessarily a, their town taking care of it.
I, I just need, I just.
I just wanted to know why we're incurring all these costs.
Yep.
Steve Studley, Recreation Director. The project, the capital project for the $25,000 is to complete a project that was done in the fall. Friends of Duxbury Pickleball raised $25,000 to do three of the six courts. The money we're requesting is to complete the project and rehab the other three courts. As far as generating revenue from out of town, we run a variety of programs, there's a Monday, Wednesday, Friday from eight to 12, it's, you need to sign up through the Recreation Department, pay a fee. Residents and out of town are welcome to join up and sign, so we do bring in revenue to help that. We also run clinics and other programs up there to generate revenue.
All, all the time, and there are numerous cars parked on the street, side of the road. And I don't think that this is addressing the safety issue of this because, or the fees that you're generating from that, that it's feared to allow that to occur.
Sure, absolutely, I know that if you drive by there anytime in the summer, prior to the pickleball courts up there, just when there's two Little League games going on, and the tennis courts were there, there's a small playground, that's always been a, that's been an issue since before, I've been here for almost 25 years, and I can remember going back that far, of cars along 53 for Tarklin because that lot does get filled up. Yeah, I don't disagree with you that we could use more parking up there, that would be great.
So, given that, as the generation of revenue from your recreation covering the expenses that occurred by the town, by people using that from out of town?
I'm sorry, I.
Services?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So, you're generating revenue for the Recreation Department, but the Recreation Department budget was voted on too already, so I'm concerned why this is an extra to it when it also taxes our other services in the town?
Yeah, this project goes above and beyond what our revolving fund could take care of.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, press one, all those opposed, press two. Motion passes 174 to nine. Mrs. Sullivan, our motion number two for the school capital budget.
Article Six, Motion Two, School Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,42,628 to the school capital budget for the purposes and in the amount specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $1,42,628 from the free cash to be expended under the direction of the school committee. Select Board voted five-zero to recommend, Finance nine-zero to recommend, Fiscal Advisory five-zero to recommend, and?
All line items except for.
Okay, so there was one exception, one line item, which we'll call out, the Fiscal Advisory voted for one to recommend the steel tennis courts. So, it passed, but not as compellingly. Line 24, Technology DHS IMAC Computer Replacement, $102,635. Technology District Switches, $513,140. Steel Athletic Complex Tennis Court Pavement, $265,819. District Furniture Replacement, $40,000. Chandler North and South Playground Project Phase One, $100,000.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody?
I didn't want to, it's a short list. I just.
Wait a second, I missed a line, I, you know, your finest chair is going blind, it's very sad, I, glasses are not working out. DMS DHS Instrument Replacement, $21,034. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Is this a hold of?
What's your hold on, dear?
This is on the tennis courts?
Okie doke, thanks. Line 26. I'm all done.
All right, sir, your name and your question.
Excuse me, Mark McDevitt, Chestnut Street. Two-part question. The tennis courts, I think, were built as part of the entire athletic complex and schools rebuild. It's my understanding that as part of that, because we received state funds, there was supposed to be a capital fund set up for maintenance and replacement of stuff done in connection with that project, and I'm wondering if I'm correct in what I think is my understanding, and is the school money coming out of that fund?
Hmm, interesting. Alex, got anything there?
We've got to go to Mike Allen.
I'm not aware of any capital funds or reserve funds that was set aside for the school building project. These tennis courts were not renovated or updated as part of the school renovations. I mean, I remember as a kid playing on these tennis courts, they've been around for a long time, and I would say in the past, so I went back through my files that go back to about fiscal year 13, we spent only about $25,000 renovating those six tennis courts, which are six of the current 10 tennis courts in town, and they're in pretty rough shape.
And a second part of my question is, I read in the Clipper, I believe, that part of the total cost of this renovation was going to be funded by the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, what is the total cost, and are we also approving the, the contribution from the Community Preservation Committee in connection with approving this expenditure?
Yes, the, the total project cost is $577,000. Article Six here is 265,691. The school building use fund will be $150,000. There is a, a grant application with the Ellison Fund for $23,000, and then Duxbury Pride, which was, if you remember, the fundraising for the turf field, still has a little, little bit of money left, they are contributing $10,000. And the CPC article, which is, someone's going to have to, 138,819, which is Article 24, will be coming up later, but the total project cost is 577,638. We've put a little bit of a squish in there, of just under 10,000, to cover escalating construction costs that we've experienced.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions or comments, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, press one, all those opposed, press two. Motion passes 171 to 13. Motion three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article Six, Motion Three, two-thirds vote required. Facilities Capital Budget Includes Borrowing. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,365,000 to the facilities management capital budget for the purposes and in the amount specified below, and to meet said appropriation, borrow the sum of $1,365,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow such sums pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town. We have the recommendations from the Select Board five-zero to recommend, Finance nine-zero to recommend, and Fiscal Advisory five-zero to recommend. Line five, Facilities, Alden Pack Chandler Roof Replacements, $500,000. Facilities, Alden Pack Boilers Phase One, $465,000. Facilities, Bathroom Renovations Phase One, $400,000, for the total of $1,365,000.
Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article Six, Motion Three. Takes a two-thirds vote because it involves borrowing, all those in favor, press one, all those opposed, press two. two. Motion passes 166 to 14. Motion four, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article six, motion four, water enterprise fund capital budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $150,000 to the water enterprise fund capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $150,000 from water retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Select Board voted five zero to recommend. Finance Committee, nine zero to recommend. Line 34, system rehabilitation, $150,000.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion passes 176 to three. Article seven, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article seven, or as we like to call it, capital light, small equipment and minor services. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $56,794 to the small equipment and minor services budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $43,194, transfer the sum of $13,600 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Recommendations, Select Board, five zero. Finance Committee, eight zero. Fiscal... You didn't want to vote? It's beneath them to vote on this. Okay. Line one, rad program, 5,148. Line two, school safety equipment, 11,672. Line three, officer safety equipment, 10,648. That was for the police. Harbor master. Line four, de-watering pump. We think a pump is always going to be de-watering, but whatever. $1,000. Line five, gangway hoist equipment and install, $11,000. Line six, attenders, 1,600. Counsel on aging. Line seven, replace the turf on the botchi court ball court, 2,468. Library, line eight, reference office carpeting, $883. Line nine, upper stairs carpeting, $2,275. Line 10, lower stairs carpeting, $2,100. Recreation, line 11, indoor lifeguard stands, $8,000. That's it.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote at this time. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Motion passes 171 to six. Article eight, Mrs. Sullivan.
Union contracts, Town of Duxbury firefighters. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $94,200 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Permanent Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, Local 2167, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2025. Select Board voted five zero to recommend. Finance nine zero. This might seem familiar, but the special town meeting article was to pay from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in the current fiscal year. And those funds needed to be voted special town meeting so that they would be available currently.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Article eight, motion number one. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Motion passes 170 to four. Article, motion two for Article eight, Mrs. Sullivan.
Union contracts, Town of Duxbury Public Safety Dispatchers. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Duxbury Public Safety Dispatchers Union, M C O P, Local 376A, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2025. And to meet this appropriation, transfer $50,000 from the Rock Enterprise Fund Reserve. Select Board voted five zero to recommend. Finance Committee, nine zero to recommend. The same comments apply to this since it was also in the special town meeting. I'm sorry, what?
We have a question in the back. Please.
What did I say? Oh, I said reserve. It's Rock Enterprise Fund revenue, not reserve. I apologize.
Hi, thank you. I'm, you know, as we're going through Article eight, so when you write off the first one for A, I guess I'm just wondering, what's the total cost for all of these individual items? And is this just for us to begin the negotiation process? I'm just trying to understand a little bit better what it's for.
Sure.
Randy, did you want to speak to that?
Good. So, a couple of things. Could I get your name?
Certainly. Sue Schofield James Road.
Thank you.
And you're doing an awesome job.
You can speak as long as you'd like.
I think she meant me, John.
I'm sure she meant you. I'm not sure exactly what your question was.
I just want to know how much A through F is going to cost, the total for that.
A through F?
Well, are they all individual items on Article eight? Am I just not understanding it properly?
So, Article eight is two contracts. These two contracts have been settled.
Okay.
And they were the, in the special town meeting, we paid for the arrears for what we owed from July 1st, 22, through the end of this fiscal year. And these are for the monies that we'll need for FY '24 to settle, to pay those contracts above and beyond what we've already appropriated for their budget.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay, good. All right. Nope, I already did. Oh, Jeannie. Oh, all set? Great.
So, if there are no other questions, I'm going to call for a vote on motion two of Article eight. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is now closed. Motion passes 176 to three. Article nine is the Duxbury Beach lease. I believe Mr. Reed has some comments he'd like to share.
Reed, did you want me to read the motion first?
No, I think I'll let him make it.
What'd he say? No?
Randy, Mr. Reed, how would you like to do this? Would you like to introduce the article or have the motion on the floor first? Why don't you say what you have to say, and then we'll move the article.
Thank you. A few questions have come to our office since the October meeting. I don't know if any of you were here, but the D B R hosted a informational session on beach access for the coming year. And I thought it might be nice so you could see what it is we're about to do. We've got a proposed motion here for a beach lease that'll be in the order of a million dollars. And the question has come up about access. If we execute a lease and we purchase stickers, are we going to be able to get to the beach and use it? So, in consultation with the representatives of the D B R, members of the Finance Committee, my recreation team, the Select Board, we've had numerous conversations on this to try and figure out better ways to do it. And what we've come up with is several steps that will hopefully allow more over sand vehicle access. And here's what they are. The beach is going to be open for longer, which will occur by two measures. The dates that the beach hours change will be updated, and the hours during the weekdays and the weekends will be extended. There will be a reduction in the buffer areas for the least turns, which will allow more vehicles onto the beach when open. The town will consider crossover three as an option when evaluating which crossovers yield the most vehicle access amongst the three crossovers. The D B R has requested an increased take allowance from the state regulators that will allow us more opportunities to implement covered activities with the hopes of increasing access. And the D B R has worked with state regulators to develop a protocol to open some pullouts for parking on the back road within restricted areas. For guys and gals that fish, like me, we love parking on that side road because there's a beautiful channel that runs along the backside. So, anybody that fishes out there will appreciate that. And also, the pullouts of the restricted areas on the back road will be open to parking where recreation is permitted. So, we've taken a number of steps. We've been working in concert with them, hand in hand, and the idea is to try and increase access because we know it's a major concern, particularly if people are buying a sticker to get out there. So, that's where we are with that. Thank you.
So, please, let's have a motion, Mrs. Sullivan, and so people understand, this will take a two-thirds vote to pass.
Duxbury Beach lease, two-thirds vote. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the purpose of leasing Duxbury Beach, being that portion of land in the towns of Duxbury and Plymouth owned by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, Inc., south of a line running approximately east to west along the northerly edge of the northerly parking area, at the east end of Powder Point Bridge, friends, subject to an area of land excluded at high pines used by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, close friends, and to authorize the Select Board or its designee to execute a lease on behalf of the town for the period beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, on such terms and conditions the Select Board deems in the best interests of the town. Select Board voted five zero to recommend. Finance eight zero one to recommend, and Fiscal voted four to three. That's exciting. All right.
I suspect we have a question up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brenda Bolin, Kingston Way. We have reached the magic number of $1,000,000 for the lease. I'm concerned about these escalating costs, and I'm wondering if most of this increase is due to the cost of securing sand.
Do we have an answer for her? No. No, you are... Yes. Chris Latanzi, Executive Director for...
Duxbury Beach Reservation.
Duxbury Beach Reservation, but you're not a resident of Duxbury.
Correct.
So, I'm going to need permission for Mr. Latanzi to address the meeting. It's a common occurrence. Do I have a motion? And second, all those in favor of allowing her to speak, I'm going to call for a vote. All those allow... Voting is open. Press one to allow her to speak. Two, if you... Okay. One for yes, two for no. Voting is closed. Motion passes 170 to 15. Please go ahead and... Thank you. Free patience.
Thank you. So, the question was, is the increase related to the beach nourishment that's done on the beach?
Or the cost of sand in general due to support the projects?
Yes, I would say a portion of it, not for the current projects that have been done, but in general and in the future. The money for the lease is for coastal resiliency to protect the town shoreline. So, if you look at the cost of about, it's obviously a lot more than a million dollars to run the beach. The nourishment we just did is 2.4 million, and all of that was raised through grants or private funding. There was no cost to taxpayers or through the lease amount. In general, it's about $300,000 to run the bird program, which allows the town to then invite people to the beach. And that's people driving in parking lots, not necessarily on the beach. And $600,000 is attributed to maintenance. That would be raising the road, maintaining it, crossovers, fencing, as well as general maintenance to the beach. So, our budget's over, is well over $3 million a year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions?
Sure.
Please.
Beth Halligan from Rogers Way. I'm just curious if John could tell us what our current, what last year's sticker revenue was, just so we can understand revenue versus what we're paying. And also, just, there was also $260-odd thousand for beach operation expense as well.
Yeah, the approximate revenue for, that we took in on beach revenues was 1.4 million 68,000 in fiscal 2023 summer. Was another part of that question, Beth? I'm sorry? That was it? That was it?
Thank you. We have another question.
Lloyd, sorry, Lester Lloyd, Washington Street. Just a question. Could someone talk about the Fiscal Advisory vote, which I believe was relatively evenly divided?
Mr. Chin, it's yours.
Thank you. Yeah, Lester. The Fiscal Advisory was split on this, four to three. So, at the end of the day, we did support it, but our, I think the vote really came down to, we're sort of at that inflection point where you have a million-dollar lease, you have $265,000 in beach maintenance to run the beach, and a million four in revenue. So, we're getting pretty close to the costs being greater than the revenue. For a long time, the beach revenue was really what funded capital projects going forward. Article six, our budget used to be around $1 million, 1.1, and that was totally funded by beach sticker sales. And beach sticker sales are way down, and the cost of running the beach is way up. So, that was really the concern of Fiscal Advisory.
Hi, Sue Schofield James Road. Just to follow up on that, Alex, and we know it's been really controversial this year, and a lot of people are speaking out. They're not going to buy their beach stickers. So, what do you anticipate the beach sticker revenue to be this year? I know it's impossible to really tell, but there's been a lot of chatter about that.
If... I think we'll start with the Finance Director with that answer, and Mr. Chin may want to jump in as well.
So, we don't technically take a stab at what revenue for every line... at what revenue for every line that's going to come in. We generally budget bottom line conservatively on our local receipts, usually at about 85% to 88% of what we brought in last time. So automatically, we're, we're budgeting 85% of what we brought in last year.
So it's on your radar screen that you're anticipating a downtrend?
It, it is on our radar screen, for sure.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chin, did you have a comment?
I, I certainly agree with, with John's point on this. I have a really neat spreadsheet, if you want to look at it, that has looked at beach sticker trends for the past, I think, 14 years. And it's, it's, it's on, it's on the decline.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. This take. Yep.
I was wondering, is there any concept of, sorry, it's loud, like a performance clause with the beach lease, whether it's sticker sales or some other metric that we could, you know, ask of the DBR? So I'm not sure if there's anything built into it right now, but just an idea.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi.
We've, we've talked about it. We're, we're still having conversations about it. The lease isn't finalized yet. But there, that is one of the ideas that we've been contemplating.
Okay.
Hello, Anthony Habay at 19 Plantation Drive. Is there the ability to condition this against that kind of a concept? Sort of the approval is conditional upon?
No.
You cannot?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Please.
Vinnie Walsh, Bay Road. I think one thing that doesn't get mentioned enough is that there's a couple of purposes of the beach. The one is, it generates revenue for the town. We all know that. And that's gotten pretty controversial. That's getting pretty close to break even. But it's also a barrier beach. And there's tens of millions of dollars of property that would be affected if that beach were to go away or be damaged. And I just think that, I think too often we just talk about the revenue side. I think we have to really think about the purpose of that beach, really, by nature. It's a barrier beach, and it's protected everything inland. Now, I live on the non-water side of Bay Road. If the beach goes away, I'm going to be waterfront, which is really cool. But I don't recommend that. So I just think that too often we just talk about that revenue, that's all. Just a comment.
Thank you.
Just a second. All right. I, Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to add to that. I've been in banking and mortgages for over 30 years and have done many in Duxbury. And I will tell you that not one person that has purchased a house in Duxbury in my conversations with them, and there's been hundreds, have not mentioned that one of the reasons that they were moving here was because of the beach and their access to the beach. So I think that it's fair to say that there are expenses that are difficult to track. There are also benefits to the community that are equally as difficult to track in a spreadsheet. And the value of everyone's home in town is directly tied to the fact that we have this beach and we have the availability to use it. Just a thought.
Do you have a comment? Question, question or comment?
Not quite sure. I want to label it. More, I guess it's sort of a question. Other towns have beaches. I lived in another town for years that did on, in, near the water. So what we had to do is we had to pay extra for our protection. But we knew the property we were buying at, the risks that we faced. So I don't know if there's going to be betterments, you know, added to this, to the people that are on the water with that, because not all the houses are priced by where they, who live in Duxbury. It seems to be, I think it's a different value. But I mean, you know when you go there and buy a house near the water, there's always that risk.
We're talking about the lease.
If I could.
But it's the beach.
Betterments and the beach lease are two different items.
Okay, but it's the beach, it's a barrier. You know that a barrier is, is going to be eroded by the water. It's, it's nature. So it's a risk you take when, when, as far as protecting property. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote? Okay. Last couple of times I said that, somebody's popped up. All right. Ready for a vote now? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Motion passes 162 to 36. Article 10, Mrs. Sullivan.
Fourth of July appropriation. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to fund the town of Duxbury's Fourth of July parade ceremonies and related activities to be expended under the direction of the town manager. The, the Select Board voted 4-0, 1, 1 abstention to recommend. Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
And Mr. McNabb has some comments to be made.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jamie McNabb, 269 Old Toby Garden Street in Duxbury. I'm also the co-chair of the Fourth of July Parade Committee and Activities Committee. And I just wanted to let everyone know that this is a lighter article, which one that we have fun with. So everybody could smile when you spend money on this article today, okay? All right. So that being said, basically, we spent $40,000 to pull off the parade and the beach party. And we're just looking for a little bit more money. We've tried to fundraise over the last three or four years, about $25,000. And we're getting down to, it keeps reducing every year now. I think we're losing a lot of our donors, which I hope everyone in here will donate this year. It doesn't matter what amount you donate. It all goes to the cause, and it's one of the funnest times we'll have in Duxbury. And as you all know, we need a little fun around here. So I hope you will vote for this article. It's another $10,000 increase. I know it's a lot, but the last time we did have an increase was 15 years ago, of $5,000. And I'm hoping that we'll get a positive vote today. So thank you very much.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the funding the Fourth of July parade, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Motion passes 182 to 14. Article 11, Mrs. Sullivan.
Educational cable access and technology. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $120,000 for the purpose of recording and live streaming school committee and other school meetings, communication support, and Dragon TV equipment and support. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $120,000 from the Cable Television PEG Access Special Revenue Fund and funds to be expended under the direction of the Duxbury Superintendent. Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee, 9-0 to recommend.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I just wanted to speak to this article because this is probably going to be a, an article, a reoccurring article going forward. The PEG Access Fund is a special revenue fund. It's set up by statute under General Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4. These monies include fees. They are collected from customers by cable companies, most specifically Verizon and Comcast, and other cable-related monies negotiated in cable television agreements between the municipality and the cable television operator. Cities and towns reserve these franchise and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG Access services, in this case, PAC TV for your government services and Dragon TV for a school. Monitor compliance within the franchise agreement or prepare for license renewal. The town adopted this general law, 44F, 5F, 3 and 3/4 at the special town meeting dated March 11th, 2017, through Article 8. The town's current agreement with the cable companies called for the town to collect 5% of the franchise fees. The town contracts with PAC TV for 3.3% of the franchise revenue for government access channels and related services. That's found in Line 20, Department 156, Public Television Access Services in the town's general fund operating budget. The remaining 1.7% is for educational programming and license renewal costs. In regards to this particular article for educational cable access and technology, prior to last year, the last time we provided any of these funds to the school was in FY 2020. Last year was to provide them PEG Access money that had accumulated between '21 and '23 for specific purposes, for specific purpose upgrades. They should be utilizing this money on an annual basis in accordance with IGR 66102 to support Dragon TV and any other educational-related cable access use. By annually appropriating these funds into a separate warrant article, line item, we can monitor that expenses are used for allowable purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Motion passes 179 to 8. We now come up to a couple of articles that I think people are anticipating. It is, it is dealing with the seawall and beach nourishment. It is noon time, and my question really is, do you want to continue to move forward or do you want to break for lunch? Break for lunch? Okay. Well, break for lunch. They are serving lunch here. If you want to just get a sandwich? I'll be with you in a second. All right. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask for a non-binding vote. If you'd like to break for lunch, press 1. If, are you ready? Break for lunch, press 1. No break for lunch, press 2. The motion fails, I guess I'd put it. 116 people would like to break for lunch. 78 people said. What was that? Yes, 78 people want to break for lunch. 116 people said, I don't want to break for lunch. I'm sorry, I want to break. I don't want to break. I don't want to break for lunch. I'm sorry. I've been standing up way too long. All the blood has seeped to my bottom.
Because you're hungry, maybe?
I'm hungry.
It's up to you to decide, my love.
I've seen people walk out the door. I'm going to say. We're going to have a quick lunch. I'm going to entertain a motion to recess for lunch right now until 1 o'clock. This vote actually really counts now. Yes, if you want to go to lunch. No, if you want to stay here. All those in favor, press 1 for lunch, 2 to stay here. Voting is open. The noes have it, we are staying. We are staying. We're staying for lunch. Not lunch. We have had way too many people walk out. We are going to take a lunch break. We'll be back, we'll be back at 1 o'clock. 1 o'clock here, we start again.